Good afternoon, I'm now going to call the Wednesday, July ninth meeting of the Norfolk County Commission to Order. Going to read the executive order on remote participation. On March twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, Governor Healy signed into law House Bill sixty-three, an act relative to certain provisions of COVID-nineteen measures adopted during a state of emergency, which includes a three-year extension of the option for public bodies to hold remote meetings by suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass. General Law, Chapters thirty-eight, Sections eighteen to twenty-five. That action was effective immediately extending the current option for remote meetings through June thirtieth, twenty twenty seven. Want to ask everyone to stand? Join me in saluting the flag.
My pleasure, Mr. Chairman. Right here. United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you very much. Welcome, everyone.
Every week.
They moved it this morning. Move what it best. Roll call. Roll call of attendance, Commissioner.
Say. Yes, sir, I am here. Thank you.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Chairman Shay is here. We have a whoa, what did I do with my pen here, mister? We'll all take it. Okay. Number three, executive session. No executive session today. Number four, minutes that are in your pack. First one, of the open session meeting of June eleventh, twenty twenty five.
I have reviewed. They seem in order, Mr. Chairman. Be pleased to make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor. Open session meeting of June eighteenth, twenty twenty five.
I have reviewed. They seem in order. I move motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve, June eighteenth. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Open session meeting of June twenty seventh.
Yes, these have been reviewed. They seem in order. I move approval. Present it.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Executive session meeting of June twenty seventh, twenty twenty five.
I move approval of the meeting minutes of June twenty seventh, subject to non-release until such matter has been resolved or addressed. Question to the Chair.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Number five, appointments. We do have one appointment. We're going to go right to it. We're kind of excited today because January, July first is the beginning of our new year, and it's also the beginning of a tenure of our new superintendent, Director at Norfolk Aggie. I don't have to tell my fellow commissioners after this last go around. The appointing committee was large. It was thorough. It was exhaustive. I think the Watergate Committee had more meetings, one more meeting than an appointment committee. But what has happened here is that it is borne fruit, and I think it was helpful to everyone, so we're going to have our new superintendent, Jeremy Gray, come up and join us. Just a just a hello and how do you do session in your first week, so. Hello, Jeremy.
Well, so thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You still, after a week, you're still staying?
Uh, it hasn't been a full week.
Well, well.
Keep it tight, right? What can happen?
It's a, it's been an exciting few days at the Aggie, and I can say that the the welcome that I've received so far has been welcoming. It's been warm. It's been genuine. And I think there's a sense of excitement, not just from me, but from the staff as well. We've hit the ground running on a multitude of different things that are coming through in vocational and agricultural education, specifically the lottery for admissions. And so the work has begun. It's ongoing, and it's very exciting. I thank you all for the opportunity. I'm very humbled and very honored. It's a wonderful school.
Did you say, what would you say, what'd you say about admissions? We're still fighting that fight, or?
The new regulations were voted in by the
General Court?
By the, yeah, by the Board of Education, so we're revamping our admissions policy to meet the new regulations.
And we're going to conform with?
Yep, we're going to be in regulation to be compliant, and it's our hope that the, it will be on the board's agenda. The commission, the board trustee's agenda and so on.
Oh, okay.
Yes, you'll have the information well ahead of time to peruse and ask questions, and we'll do a presentation at the first meeting.
So let's go next.
On that subject, I thought, I've been following this like we all have pretty closely. My understanding in talking to some state reps is that they had tabled the matter when the budget hearing was taking place, and they wanted to be under further study. But yet DOE went ahead and voted to implement the regulations. So what happens on that? It's like a conflict between, you know, a board, administrative board, and you got the state reps. Is that, we have to move forward?
Yes, there was a, I believe it was Senator Moran or Representative Moran who had put an amendment in to table the proposed lottery system and develop a credit group. That amendment was removed prior to the vote at the legislature. So we are bound by the board's vote to begin work on lottery policy.
Okay.
So we are, will be in compliance. There are some specific things that pertain to agricultural schools, county schools, or, you know, basically two in the state really. So we're working with Bristol County as a, you know, we're working with them, so we're all kind of on the same page.
Yeah. And I just happened to catch today, just this morning, checking on me, I came out of whatever our locker room, which sometimes helps us out. They have a seminar or something tomorrow or this week on the new regulation concerning comming methods and the timeout.
Yes.
So I don't know if you're aware of that, but that might be an interesting thing to catch, but I don't know if you're, not trying to put it in a spot. There's always something going on.
There's always something.
But there's something that's coming down in terms of the new regulation that DOE is promulgating on that. So give a heads up.
Absolutely, and it's something that we're all involved with, and the work with specifically like with admissions, it's not just, we're working, we're not working silo, we're working with MAVA, the Mass. Association of Vocational Administrators, we're working with other vocational schools.
Good.
And we're working with, you know, teachers and staff and parents at the school too, so, you know, on not just admissions, but everything.
Oh, that's good.
It's a truly collaborative effort.
All right.
Well.
Well, anything you need from us, obviously.
Scary God, I knew it was going to happen.
Oh, yeah.
I'm going to deal with it.
Yeah, well, I could deal with that. That's, you know. Right, if you read it though, what John had said, your predecessor, we were pretty close to doing almost what they wanted there. It wasn't totally blind admission, but we, we had a very good policy in place.
It was a very fair and very liberal policy. It works well, and it's worked well for the school, and I would just like to say, if I may, on behalf of, you know, Superintendent Martin, he's been working with me since, since my appointment, and he's been a wonderful partner on a smooth transition, and his counsel's been great. So I'm very appreciative, John.
Great to know. Good to know.
Any other questions or comments for Jeremy?
I'll come forward.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Our meeting's August eighteenth or fifteenth?
I'm not sure about that yet, but it will be on their first regular agenda in September.
Okay. Maybe we won't have a meeting in
I think the chair has for a special meeting concerning some other things. That's August seventh. There's a special meeting of the board, but this item will be a regular September schedule.
Yep.
That's my understanding.
What's the special meeting for?
Possible contracts.
Oh, okay.
You want to
Then we'll keep that separate, okay. I don't want to talk about stuff today. This is a meet and greet. I don't want to deliberate in any way, shape, or form. There'll be plenty of time. Get into the weeds.
Yeah.
How many years were you at your other job?
This is my fourth and last school. I can, I can promise you that. So I spent my first, I was a student at a regional vocational school. My background, I was autobody. That was what I took as a trade. And I went back to the same school that I was a student at, and I taught collision repair for fourteen years. And then I became an administrator there, sort of an assistant principal at that school, did that job there for eight years. So it was over twenty-two years total. I left there looking to move up, and I went and did a very short stay at Dyton Rehoboth Regional School District. And then I landed at Attleboro because they were building a brand new school, and they needed somebody to come in who can develop and start an open new vocational programs. And I did just under six years there before landing here at the Aggie. So it's, this October second will be my thirtieth anniversary for being hired in education. It's like thirty years.
That's great.
I know I don't look it.
All right.
Okay, last call. Any other comments? We do have a couple of items on the school on the agenda, but they're very light. You notice how all of personnel comes through and you sign, and then we sign, and, you know, we actually physically look at all of this stuff. Warrants. John brings all the warrants up and whatever, whenever we need, and then kind of stands in, which has kind of been tradition. I mean, you're welcome to come to our meetings. They're every week, but I don't think it's necessary.
I appreciate that.
Other people did it in other ways, but, you know.
It's not that far behind.
No. I'm going on the business manager because the previous business manager that John was very active, uncommon in the meetings. And Tammy came too. And John came too, so. But we don't have John to push around anymore. Is he going to Brock Island?
He's been going there off and on.
Really? It's amazing. She explained it to me. What a good deal.
Interesting, huh?
Yeah, it's interesting how they do it. I mean, I thought like he was intro person. He said, no. It's a part-time job.
Lovely place.
Nice place.
Good for him. Oh, good. Good to hear he's working. Now, is he still working with you, or is he all done?
No, he's still, he's still
It's through the month of July, right?
Yes.
I think he'll help you off and on. I mean, he's got to balance.
He's got a balance, though. Yeah, he's been very helpful.
And so really, August first, you'll be kind of on your own.
I'll be all, no more training wheels.
There you go. There you go. They come off.
Yes, sir.
Right. We have a, a room that's being outfitted. I think it's, hopefully, hopefully get over there.
I was there yesterday.
Yeah, hopefully get over there myself.
It's coming out really good.
Yeah.
His people did, Pete and them did a great job.
Pete's great.
So if we're, if we're under threat, the whole county can move to that room.
There you go. That's the idea.
We never used to, oh, we never, but we needed, we needed the space, so.
Yeah.
And this, that's the same for you folks, which we'll talk about another day. I mean, if you get in a jam, you can, you know, you can run your office right out of there, but we'll get into that this fall, and we'll have a little ribbon cutting on the night that the project board comes. We could have our, we could have our commissioners meeting and go right over.
I like that.
That week.
I like it.
In, in Norfolk, and then, we like to move every now and then. We have seldom do it, but we usually get to Quincy once or twice a year, and then we talk about going to Brooklyn, but we never do. And might be a good time to branch out, that's.
You're always welcome to Canton, if you want to go there. But we can move around. It'd be fun.
Okay.
It's good to see you.
Good to see you, Lord.
All right, we're here. We'll talk to you later.
All right, take care.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Okay. Number six, public comment. Every week in our meeting, we have public comment from anyone in the public sector that wants to come in and say hello, or is out in Zoom land and wants to come in and say hello. So now is the time. If there's anyone out in Zoom that would like to public comment, now is the time for the comment. John, have you had anyone ask or inquire?
No, sir.
Nobody this week?
Nope.
Okay, last call for public comment. Seeing no public comment, we'll go to number seven, all business. We have none. Number eight, personnel matters for consideration. Commitment stated.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, yes, sir. Pleased to move the following at the Norfolk County Agricultural High School. We have two notice of contingent employment. The first is I move approval for Julie in Senate as student worker at the rate stated effective date seven-ten-twenty-five, so moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote next.
The second, Mr. Chairman, I move approval and notice contingent employment for Mike Wilds, a student labor guardian. I should have said they went for a camp, but student work for a guardian, rate stated effective date seven-ten-twenty-five, so moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
That is all we have.
Number nine, payroll expense warrants for approval.
All right, Mr. Chairman, pleased to do it. We have quite a long list here. Let's start with payroll. I move approval for the warrant list of seven-nine-twenty-five. Payroll of the county, twenty-six dash oh-one, the sum, hundred fifty thousand, eight hundred two dollars, seventy-nine cents, so moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote, next.
Second item, twenty-six dash oh-one, parentheses, one, payroll of the school. Move the approval of ninety-six thousand, one hundred seventy-five dollars, thirty-five cents, so moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Third, payroll of the school, another item, twenty-six dash oh-one, parentheses, one point one, the sum, two hundred fifty-four thousand, four hundred seventy-five dollars, twenty-two cents, so moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye, it is a vote.
Next item, payroll of the county, item twenty-five dash fifty-two, move approval of one hundred eighty-two thousand, five hundred four dollars, seventy-nine cents, so moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Next item, for the Walsh Recreational Facility, item seven dash one-twenty-five, credit card payment, move approval of fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred forty-nine dollars, so moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye, it is a vote.
And the last two are expense items for the county. First, seven one oh, seven oh one twenty-six, move approval for the county expense, the sum five hundred fifty-seven thousand, one hundred forty-seven dollars, fifty-three cents, so moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Final item, Mr. Chairman, oh seven dash oh two twenty-six, expense to the county, three million, two hundred fifty-eight thousand, three hundred forty-one dollars, ninety-two cents, so moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
That concludes the warrant.
Payroll expense warrants, thank you. Number ten, upward transfers for approval, Director Corran.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two transfer requests today. I'll be of consideration. The first is for the city of Quincy. Quincy is requesting a transfer of twelve thousand, nine hundred twenty-four dollars and thirty-five cents. They've developed a surplus from their original ARPA request of two-point-three million dollars for unit support. I'm sorry, infrastructures improvements. And they request to transfer this now to application ARPA one-three-two-three, which is also, I believe, an infrastructure project. So they're looking to optimize the total amount of award by moving twelve thousand, nine twenty-four point thirty-five from ARPA ten-seventeen to ARPA thirteen-twenty-three.
And all this is, there are closing procedures.
That's correct.
Away and start. Okay, great.
So seek an approval on that item.
So what's it going to again?
So this is all within the city of Quincy. They're moving it from ARPA ten-seventeen to ARPA thirteen-twenty-three. The total sum is twelve thousand, nine twenty-four point thirty-five.
Nine twenty-four point thirty-five?
That's right.
Okay. I move that approval request from the city of Quincy for ARPA funds in the amount of twelve thousand, nine hundred thirty-four dollars and thirty-five?
Nine hundred twenty-four dollars and thirty-five cents.
Nine hundred twenty-four dollars, thirty-five cents, for Quincy for the reasons stated within the categories presented by a director.
Second. On the Quincy ARPA transfer made, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote, thank you.
The second transfer is for the town of Franklin. Franklin was originally granted a sum of money of one point five, I'm sorry, eight hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars for an infrastructure, I'm sorry. One second. I've got a lot of things to do. Right, so the original application, ARPA twelve thirty-five, was a mental health clinician program. You may remember, this is one of the two in Norfolk County that were kind of unique, and Franklin has done wonderful work with this, but they've developed an eighty-six thousand dollar surplus, which they would like to move to ARPA account one oh four five, and that was a stormwater improvement in infrastructure project that they were approved of back in twenty-twenty-two. So they're moving a total of eighty-six thousand dollars from ARPA twelve thirty-five to ARPA ten forty-five. That is my request.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if you want, move for the town of Franklin, the request for the transfer of ARPA funds in the amount of eighty-six thousand dollars from ARPA fund twelve thirty-five to ARPA fund ten forty-five to assistance stormwater management as a directedness appeared by our director.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
You'll see these items come up likely in next week's warrant. Vote after your vote. That is all I have on the ARPA transfer for approval, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, excellent. Number eleven, request for civic charity rate at the Quincy Golf Course for two two functions. The first one is the Mark A Sushi, Susi, S-U-S-I, Susi Scholarship Fund.
Right, this was an annual event that
It's an annual event, it's
We hear about it frequently, and they seem to do something.
Thirty-third annual event.
Right.
I know, I remember that Mark Susi was a young man at one of our high schools. It could have been Milton, but I think it was a private school. He was gone to hockey practice, and he got away home, he lost his life. I don't know, he was hit by a car, he was in a car, but sushi family, very prominent, very active. Very large contracting company, but this is a big tournament, and it's thirty-three years old.
Very happy to move approval of their efforts. But I move that we grant to the Mark A Susi Scholarship Fund Committee, Golf, Golf Fund, Golf Tournament Committee, the waiver they requested for July nineteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, second one.
Wait, wait.
One second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor? On the sushi
Definitely charity rate.
Number two, charity. From our friend and colleague Scott Campbell. Dear Commissioners, on behalf of the Norfolk Quincy slash Quincy High School Annual Football Group, we're writing today to ask for your support and organization as we are organizing our twelfth year for our charity golf tournament. We have grown this tournament as a canvas bucket of two. We are writing today to request that our group receive the civic rate and all of the money used for Quincy students to get scholarships to college administered by a committee chaired by Counselor Scott Campbell. This is also not a long time tournament, but a growing tournament. Quincy North. Notices always have separate teams and everything. This year, the Quincy, next year, there's only going to be one hockey team.
Oh.
So this gathering, this is getting together is, I think, the trend on a lot of things. This is a fundraiser, but this used to be only Quincy High, and then they joined with, they allowed North to come in and
So the fundraiser, Mr. Chairman, is, it's for both football teams, right? Don't they have two football teams?
Both football.
North and regular?
Right, and then
They get it Christmas, while they walk right around.
They, they review everyone that's going to college, and they give some of them, they split up whatever.
But it's, it's good.
They're a four oh three C corporation.
I don't recall this request, though. This seems like a new one.
In the past? I don't either. There's a chance.
Yeah.
There's a chance this was at Furnish Brook, but it's not anymore.
Okay, well.
Because you can make more money with us, because you get more forces.
Well, there you go.
I'm going to go out on a limb and say that this was at Furnish Brook for the first few years.
Is Scott the chair of the group here?
Yes.
I didn't know that. Yeah, I don't recall it.
Here's a, here's something in the winter, too.
Yeah, good. So I'd be happy to move approval, if you want.
Yes.
For the the group is called the North Quincy Quincy High Alumni Football Group to get the charity rate for their golf tournament to be held at President's Golf Course on August eighth, twenty twenty-five, pursuant to their letter and their description of the event.
Second. Motion made and seconded, I have a comment. I spoke too soon. I talked about money going scholarships, because that's generally what it does. But this explanation is giving over one hundred thousand back to both the Quincy
Yeah.
Quincy High Football and North Quincy. This extra funding has been available to the football programs each school. We are proud to welcome new members every year. Okay. They put it right back into the program.
The program, yeah.
I did notice new uniforms, et cetera, et cetera, so.
Probably offset what they don't get from the city.
Correct. We don't, we don't charge athletic fees either, so.
Hi, my motion was made, that's fine.
Yep. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Whoa. Go, go. Number twelve, report from the procurement department on bid openings and contract awards. We have done this today, okay? Number thirteen, fiscal year twenty-five reserve lists for approval. Going to have Director Corran just explain it. It's good to understand this being at the beginning of the, well, it's just kind of real. Okay, that's right. It's in your pack.
Right.
And
What's up?
It's interesting, John. Why don't you forgive us as you
Sure, thank you. Commissioners, on behalf of the procurement unit, our CEO, Mary McHugh, and fiscal specialist Alex, Alec Loreno. The work has been completed, as before, you to request a total of seven hundred forty-nine thousand, nine, seven hundred ninety-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents be reserved. As you know, when the county closes its fiscal year, it reaches out to its department heads, asking for any relevant accounts that may need funds from that fiscal year reserved into fiscal year twenty-six to make payment on obligations. The exercise involved a fair amount of dialogue with the department heads. The deadline was June twenty-fifth, over the last week. Our procurement unit has gone through each line item to secure and validate these requests. So before you, it was a detailed list. We won't go through it today, but as in the past, we do request your approval for the treasurer to reserve a total of seven hundred forty-nine thousand, seven hundred ninety-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents. This is a combination of both operating line item reserves as well as capital line item reserves. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so this is bills that don't get processed in time. They're always a month behind anyway.
Well, it's, it's more than bills that don't get processed in time. This is, the obligations have been out there. We have the funding. We just need time to make payments and hold these until, all of these have purchase orders or obligations filed.
Any questions, Commissioners?
Quick one, if I could.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, so I understand the process in the town, sometimes they call it like encumbering money, or they have a different vein for it, but same idea. These are bills, these are obligations. We have to put it aside.
Correct.
How, accounting wise, though, how does that, when we do have trial balance, does it, how does that show up in the trial balance?
No.
Is that, that gone?
No, what will happen is effectively, these funds will mostly be expended by the end of August.
Okay.
Anything that's not expended from this batch reverts to become surplus, which would be declared a surplus by the treasurer's office.
Okay.
So, but as we close, and we are closing, treasurer's office will officially close tomorrow. The activity is, we have a large sum of money that needs obligation protection. That's what this reserve does. And then we have some other funds, usually salary lines, that are not reserved. Those become part of our official surplus, which we'll announce within the next several weeks.
That's what I asked you. That's the next question. All right, one more, please, if I could, Mr. Chairman. I threw you across the chart. So do we build in a little extra in cases lately bill, or is this it?
No, we don't. We have a separate, we have a separate line item in our annual budget for unpaid bills from prior fiscal years.
Okay.
So it goes against that line item.
Good, okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Anything else? Anyone have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, is the motion accepted, correct?
Motion to approve.
Oh, okay.
So are we approved, Mr. Chairman, that we put in a reserve fund?
Wow, that we reserve, total of?
Some seven hundred forty-nine thousand, seven hundred ninety-seven dollars, ninety-nine cents, as described as containing both operating and capital total presented to us this day.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is approved. Maureen, we're all set. You had nothing for us today, Clark?
Yeah, she left.
Okay, good.
She's just checking in.
Okay. Number fourteen. RSVP program, federal advocates, advocate, advocate. One more. Advocates, no?
Advocacy.
Advocacy.
I give you a pass.
Oh, no, I
Hey.
Lucille, please.
She is?
Hello.
Come on in, Lucille.
Good to see you.
Nice to see you.
Thank you.
How are things at RSVP, then?
Yes, well, thank you very much, Commissioners, for the time. We have some good news, lots of good news, and a challenge. So I'd like to share the good news first, if I could. We have a lot happening. Since February, we've added two new stations for volunteers, an adult day in Weymouth and at the Franklin United Methodist Church. We've reactivated QCAP and Interfaith Social Services in Quincy. We just had a successful school year, end of school year luncheon and meeting. Ninety percent of the classroom volunteers report they're very satisfied or satisfied with their roles. We're now actively recruiting for September. So if anybody out there in Zoom land would like to volunteer for elementary schools, please give us a call. So if anybody out there in Zoom land would like to volunteer for elementary schools, please give us a call. We're planning our annual volunteer luncheon Thursday, August fourteenth, at the Four Points Sheridan in Norwood from eleven to one. We have seventy R S V Ps so far, very high energy from folks calling in. They're excited to come. We're currently doing a video to capture a lot of the work and positive feedback from volunteers and the partner stations. And I want to thank the community very much for their generosity. We have about eight hundred dollars in gift cards and giveaways for the volunteers to partake in at the luncheon. So as you might know, we have about two hundred volunteers on our roster, a hundred and seventy-five to a hundred and eighty are very active, may have one or more volunteer roles. The Rides for Vets program, very busy. We have forty-one drivers. We, since January, we've completed five hundred and sixty-two rides. That's about eighty rides a month. And from last year at this time, that's an eleven percent increase in requests. So we're very, very busy with Rides for Vets. The summertime's always challenging because people are on vacation. But we're doing the best we can. And other Meals on Wheels and other nonprofits are reporting the same type of strain because of the vacations that they have limited drivers. We've appeared on three cable shows, Quincy, the chairman Shay has done the Quincy cable. And Commissioner Stady has done the Canton and Stoughton to get the word out about needed drivers and opportunities that we have available. And we've upgraded our social media and have a few more followers, but we always welcome more. So those are all the, that's all the good news fit to print for R S V P. And I, I don't want to, I hesitate to call it bad news, but it's definitely a challenge, which is our funding from the federal source, the AmeriCorps Seniors Program, which, as you know, we've been sending some updates to you by email. Back in April, there was a, a large cut to that program. They laid off about eighty-five percent of their staff, including our portfolio manager, so we have sort of lost that personal contact with AmeriCorps. But we're still communicating through a regular email box to whoever's on staff that day. So we're in a watch and wait status, I, I would say. We're, we're not, we're funded through April of twenty twenty-six. And we've been able to draw down funds to keep the operation going. And also, you know, we're looking at ways to think about contingency plans if things should happen abruptly, which, as you know, with this administration, they often do happen abruptly. So we're, we're being pessimistic, but also knowing that we want to keep the program running. I think we have your support, as you mentioned in the past, about making sure that the program continues because it provides such a vital service. We'll certainly keep you informed of any announcement that comes down from AmeriCorps. Some of my colleagues and peers have had their funding frozen. I'm hoping that's not going to happen for us, but so far it hasn't, but I, I think we should be prepared that, that it might happen at any point. So as you can see from the overview I've given this, this morning, particularly the Rides for Vets program remains a vital service and, of course, has increased in need. Many of the drivers, many of the riders I talked to, you know, had to cancel their appointments if we couldn't provide a driver because they had no other way to get there. The Uber is very expensive as well as a taxi service and, you know, we've talked about maybe using some of the funding for vouchers to replace, you know, some of that need. So there's different creative ways that we're thinking about to make sure that people are getting tuned from their medical appointments. And also we have thirty partner sites that we work with and we fill vital volunteer roles for them, food pantries, the schools. And the list goes on, as you know. Voices for Volunteer Service, which is an advocacy group that works on behalf of AmeriCorps, has just released a robust advocacy campaign about keeping AmeriCorps intact. So we'll see, and we have no word whether or not there was any mention of AmeriCorps in this last bill that was signed recently. So we're keeping our ears to the grindstone, as they say, and I'm checking in with my colleagues regularly. We, we meet once a month by Zoom and we exchange ideas and ways to keep programs running without certain funding. So that's where we stand, and I, I welcome any questions or comments you may have.
Director Crum, just to complement what Lucille's remarks informed you on, we have previously sent Navex advocacy letter to elected officials. Mr. Buckley has a copy of that letter. If you're inclined, we can certainly update that letter and pass it along to our congressional representatives so they are aware of your strong interest in maintaining the programs. Lucille brought in, I think that's the most actionable piece that we can do now beyond monitoring and clearly planning for any potential outcome. So if you're inclined to support that type of letter, we can certainly draft it and have it before you as soon as possible for endorsement.
I think it's great. I would, I support it.
This program is over fifty years old. Started, started, believe it or not, under Richard Nixon, under another title. That's it. He started getting money out to the cities. They all see the program and all that. And very similar city stuff, good stuff. We got involved in two thousand, if you don't remember this, two thousand and two. We, we started here.
Long before that. Long before that.
Really?
Hmm, even further back.
Okay, that's good. And. We're not, we're not, it's, we're not in the driver's seat, but, you know. I. I guess you need to follow the money and I don't know where, I don't propose to know where this, which department handles this money and how they're doing this. You know, right now, depending on who you're talking to. Yeah, fair enough. But I think if they can abolish the Department of Education, if they can, it's probably a legal matter. Change whether my children can be back there, I suppose they can take money away from programs like this, but we hate to see it. We work, we work within it and it's worked well, so. Keep our fingers crossed.
Right. And there's, there's all kinds of great statistics from these advocacy groups about how much money it saves the taxpayer to have volunteers in roles. With the nonprofit or the municipality, we have to pay that person, you know, otherwise, and, and it's, it's unfortunate, but hopefully we can come up with a creative way to make sure we take care of the the volunteers that we have who are very excited about going to work every day in their role and, and the veterans that we need to help out.
Well, unfortunately for me, I'm in a program three days a week, as you all know, at five in the morning. And the drove of people on my shift. I, I'm able to get there myself, or my wife takes me. But if it isn't a ride program, it's private carriers, sometimes rooster ambulance.
Yeah.
And then people like volunteers like I program, so.
Exactly.
Very, very hot. Yeah, even the ride is a part of the M V T A now, it's not.
Right.
Might be free to the customers, although I don't know that, but there's.
There's a, I think it's a nominal fee, but the problem is with the ride is you have to do the whole route. So if you.
Right.
If you are a patient and you're having a procedure, it's, it's difficult for.
It's not, it's not catered to you.
Right. And this is a direct ride with a volunteer who is, we have a lot of veterans who drive and it's nice for the veteran to have that. It's, it's also almost like a friendly visit as well. We do friendly visits as part of our program, but you know, they, we have, they have a nice connection because they're both Marines or they're, you know, they've been in the service together and they trade stories. So it's also keeps the senior active mentally as well as getting them to their important appointment.
Okay, well, we'll keep our fingers crossed, but.
If I could.
We're set for this year.
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner.
What, what amount of money roughly are we looking at that if, say, program, I know we're set through like this year, twenty-five to twenty-six.
Yeah.
Let's say God forbid the program to cut, what are we looking at? How much are we losing?
It's a good question, so.
Do we know?
Uh, yeah.
About eighty thousand.
Yes, eighty, eighty, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And, hmm, so the big question for, for us is, do we apply in September? So we, at some point, they have to let us know because September thirtieth is the deadline to apply for the next three years. So if they're going to abolish the program, we have to know whether or not, you know, we're supposed to apply. So I'm, I'm anticipating we're going to hear something in August. But, you know, you just never know.
So I would encourage you anyway to go forward if appropriate, but I think too, more than ever, we want to get those letters to our congresspeople and other delegation any way we can.
Hmm.
I mean, they're doing the best they can. It's a numbers game and we all know what's happening there. It's a
Right.
difficult thing. Yeah, one last question, just a thought. If our VP is looking at and does run its retired senior volunteer program.
Hmm.
We've got a superintendent here, right back there, and I know, being a former educator myself, that a lot of times students from their seniors have to complete a certain amount of community service and community action. And I'm thinking if we had cuts, thinking outside the box, is there some way we could get perhaps responsible seniors at the high school, maybe to help our seniors who have small rides, things like that. Just something to think about. We could have a discussion, but just to plant the seed, you know, I know that they do all sorts of things, they're great programs. And I know the Aggie school does it, like other schools, the seniors have to do a certain amount of community action.
Hmm.
But just something to think about. Is a, is a county program that could you help their need, do a great job? And maybe that's something to think, maybe in terms of moving forward, maybe our seniors or something could look at that as well, just a thought.
Yeah. I mean, traditionally, our program is fifty-five plus.
Yeah.
But that was sort of the parameters set by AmeriCorps seniors. So as John and I have talked about sort of informally, without certain strings attached, so to speak, you might be able to
That's what I'm saying.
reconfigure
Yeah.
the program in a different way.
AmeriCorps funds us, that's fine. We lose that funding. I'm looking, I always try to look ahead, that's my problem. I look sometimes too far ahead, but I mean, looking down the road, maybe we may have to look at other ways we can keep it going both financially, but also with people we have in the county help us out.
Definitely. We're open to any, any step kind of discussion like that.
Yeah, keep plugging.
Hmm.
We'll see in August for sure.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for your support. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else for Lucille?
Right.
All right.
They have a superintendent in your way.
Thank you, John.
Hi.
Good to see you. How you doing?
Thanks, Lucille. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number fifteen, report of the county director. Director Crum.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a few items. So the S A F this morning, rather, I confirmed with incoming advisory board chair Beckman that the advisory board will be meeting the following four dates in the coming fiscal year, September seventeenth, December seventeenth, April fifteenth, and May thirteenth. Very similar schedule we've had the last several years. The pattern will follow that we hope to meet at the advising, excuse me, at the agricultural high school. Will some of that invitation with schools, school staff when they return from vacation, but the chair approves of these dates. Meetings usually start at six. The finance committee starts anywhere between five thirty, five o'clock prior to that. So it's generally the guidelines that we will follow in fiscal year twenty-six. For chair, Elizabeth Child stopped in this afternoon and is looking to engage the subcommittee on bylaws, advisory board bylaws that was approved at the last meeting. Start having a dialogue with the appointed individuals on that. Assistant County Director Bill Buck will work with her to manage those meetings and agendas. County Commissioners Association meeting is now scheduled for Thursday, August seventh at noon. All I know right now is it's in Fall River. The location will be shared by Crystal County, our host, as soon as they let us know. So just save the date right now. Hopefully next week you will have a plumber candidate before you for consideration of approval. We've completed her interviews. Very capable and qualified individual. He's in background right now and I just want to let you know after some long period of time, that vacancy, we seem to have found somebody who's a good match. Hopefully we'll see him next week. If the commissioners haven't seen it on their way in, the file storage room is now near complete. They should be wrapping it up today. The next phase will be the record movement from their current location, the Blue House, under the registry of deeds. That will start next week. We're looking to also bring on a temporary employee for a period of two to three weeks to help with the record management, scanning, document, document prep. Excuse me, consistent with the Massachusetts Public Records Law. So more on that later, but the process of filling up that room will start next week and likely take many weeks. Think in order to get it right, we want to make sure they file properly and secure. And by the way, the drunk came over very happy. Our performance evaluations for the department's heads have been set. I believe I have my first one this week. We'll wrap them up over the next week. This is the completion of review of goals for FY twenty-five and the establishment setting of new goals for the department heads for the coming fiscal year. I'll meet with the chairman so he can do my evaluation separately during this time period as well, but I just want to let the commissioners know tis this season as we have the fiscal year, that's our evaluation cycle. Shortly you'll be hearing more from me on the Smokey policy. You may remember about a month ago, we had a complaint from individuals in one of our downtown public buildings. We've looked into it. Our facility superintendent has had to do some digging for information on public regs, both at the state and local level. Still have some more work to do before I put it before you, but I just want to let you know it's in progress. Commissioners in your package should receive copies of the letter that the county received addressed to me. It's an approval of waivers by the Department of Energy Resources for the Norfolk County Agricultural High School Emsa Grant. This was the solar project that had a couple of complaints filed against his Emsa. The waivers were granted, so that's a very favorable letter from D O R dated June twenty-six, twenty twenty-five. Council has a copy of the letter as well. And then finally, our FY twenty-four audit is winding down. I think I've given the commissioners brief updates before. After reading the most recent update, the auditors are dealing exclusively at this time with the treasurer's office on some treasurer's office matters. I think they have what they need from all of our departments. So as soon as they are ready to provide their product, we'll get it in front of you for approval and it will be up to date with all our audits. And that's all I have this afternoon for you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any questions for Director Crum?
No, it's great to have all these too. Again, just a note, I know it's not on our agenda, but that day we have the county meeting later at night, the chair and trustees called from special board meeting too. We could zoom in, but that's.
It's.
It's August seventh. So it's August seventh, August seventh. Be a busy day for us, you know, something to consider for you.
Got it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, well, we'll be on the road. We're just going to switch over.
You know, so Director Buck, he gave me a copy. We, just for review, we're not signing it.
Yeah, we'll endorse it later.
Okay, the rest were all multiple copies of page two, with the printer, playing the printer, but I didn't know if I wanted to share this with the chair or. He's only one copy.
Review it and we'll endorse it after your review.
Okay, all right. Chairman, next week I'm going to have a slight problem, perhaps being here, but there's a very important event taking place at the State House with someone very close to me.
Correct.
So I was.
I was just going to comment on that.
Got confirmed on that. That should be getting sworn in at one fifteen. And obviously I'd like to be in attendance, so if you have the wherewithal to move on meeting to Tuesday or Thursday, I'm open to that. If not, I will have to say I won't be, can't be zooming in on that one, but I want to give you a heads up.
Okay, well, we can talk about it then. Make up my mind quickly. But congratulations.
Thank you.
We have a new state representative, not in Norfolk County, but right on the fringes.
On the fringe.
Is that called the Bristol?
Bristol, third Bristol.
Third Bristol.
Mostly, mostly Taunton and a little bit eastern, so. A lot of challenges ahead, lots of challenges, but you could have a friend in government too, so, you know, be interesting.
Yeah, it's exciting too.
Yeah.
I mean, imagine winning the election by ten votes.
Yeah, very close, fifteen.
Fifteen, started at twenty. Fifteen, we started at twenty.
Yeah, well, we've got a couple of recounts and then, uh, this morning the opponent.
It's eye opening though to do it.
Oh, very, yeah, very, very interesting process. Learned a lot.
Okay, I, I have nothing else, uh, on, on, under number sixteen. The chair did not reasonably anticipate would be discussed, but I have nothing else. I'll take a motion to adjourn and then, uh, Director Corn and I will talk about setting meeting day other than next Wednesday.
Uh, Director Buck, he did inform me before we leave, he did want us to sign the signature page. That's why I had so many copies, so. He gave, he would like a sign for it.
That's okay.
Otherwise, move me adjourned at two o'clock.
Second. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourned at two P M. Thank you.